When I flow head on those things, take all the juice. The bigger they are, the more juice they take. That's why I said go with small and we'll do the big one. Yeah, you got, it's, it's slow. Very slow that way. And it's definitely not something you're gonna wanna run in the summertime.
It's supposed to be made through that machine.
Yeah, they'll tell you that. I've played in that enough to know that they're all oversized for what they are. So they say there's a minimal, do a minimal. The bigger they are, the more power to take it.
But it's working.
It's working. It's just, he's actually done quite a bit. You know, it's, I don't know.
They're probably get faster as they go.
Well, the other thing is I wanna go over and see how idle the speed is running at, too. You know what? All hydraulics, they tell you 25 gallons a minute. Well, that's a max RPMs.
Yeah, that's a certain rate.
Yeah, if you're running at half that, you do half your hydraulics. And that may be an issue. You know, you may have to run a side one. Drop it up, you know. But other than that, of course, we have had the weather, so we can't really knock other than rain. But, um... Just didn't do much over the weekend. There was a couple of spots in Wallenford that, like, 155 was really bad on Saturday morning. But it didn't, all rest of it was, Steve Morrissey said he went out checked and there was no issue there. I guess something was Lori's truck was down a little bit, they worked on that, I don't know what it was. He was telling me just something little, they worked on that. And then, uh...
Are you gonna head up to West Hill after for roads ongoing?
Yep, we're going. I told him he went to West Hill, he needed to make sure he had full sign package on. On 140, because they don't even slow down up there.
Well, they oughta be doing it wherever they are, but...
Well, you can put out working, been working signs and he moves his truck along with him, so they have strobe lights, which is good. But West Hill 140 is gonna have to have signs out every time he moves. Especially on 140, West Hill's not so bad. And then, uh...
You had Haven Hill, Haven Hill speed concerns and trees?
Oh yeah, that's right. The, um... Mike Shanahan and neighbors are concerned that those limbs keep falling out of those bigger maple in that narrow neck of property that the town has just before the Clarinet line, where they built the three houses in the meadow. And he wants to know if the town is gonna take those down. I thought he was gonna be here tonight, but, um... I said, "I'll bring it up to the town again." I said, "I don't, it's nothing the town crew can do. This is tree, they've gotta climb open. They're too, way too big for the town." You know, and it's something that, I don't know whether they wanna use the tree money that we set aside every year for something like that. I've looked at it, they are, they're deteriorating.
Has the tree warden looked at?
Well, I don't, who's the tree warden now? Bob Still?
Rob Barker.
Yeah, I haven't talked to him, I don't know. I didn't wanna do anything until...
Four thousand in the budget.
Would you like me to have them look at them and give us an estimate?
I think so.
Sounds like it's something we should do.
Yeah, and that?
It's definitely on our side, right? Because Mike Shanahan's got land on both sides.
Uh, no, it's in the right of way. Their right, their right type of right of way.
Yeah, but it is in the Wallenford side of the...
Oh yes, yes. Yes, it's south of the turnaround. Yeah, it's in the neck of, right on the edge of that metal line, is where it is. And what I'll do is take Rob over, I'll get a count on how many trees and what he thinks to take them down. But probably the easiest way, if he'll do something like that, would be just close the road and knock them, put them down the road and then they...
And just have him evaluate them and see, do they need to be knocked down? Or do they need to be limbs removed? And in the trees, maybe, maybe some of them need knocked down, some of them don't. That's why I think it's a good idea to have Rob.
Yeah, he can look at them. I would guess they're gonna have to be taken down.
Okay.
You know, it's, we'll see what he says and...
And then, then we'll decide what the money we have, what we can do.
Yeah. And the other concern was from Mike again, was the speed on that road. The kids, I guess there's some new people moved in up above and they all have kids. I said, "I think that's gonna take a traffic study and all that other stuff to go change after 25 on Clarinet." So that's, I'm just bringing it up to the board.
Okay.
How's it gonna feel about that? I mean, personally, I'm not in favor of Laura just being on that. People are gonna drive the speed they're gonna drive.
Is there a sign already on that road on the Clarinet that says 25?
It's 25 on Clarinet's roads. But when it hits that, change over.
And on that particular road, Clarinet has a sign on their town line that says 25, but we don't have anything right now.
Well, I think we have 35.
We got a 35?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any money set aside to do anything on that?
A sign?
Or it looks like you'd need to do a traffic study?
I mean, that's if you wanted to lower the speed on that.
Right. Do we have any?
You're also gonna have to have a, a meeting too, I read that.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing.
The newspaper.
It's kinda like only do the one way or try to do that.
Yep. And if you do that, what everybody else in the road didn't wanna do.
Yeah, no, another one you can do that.
Yeah.
And it's dead end, it's not like you're going anywhere, but...
Could just ask the chair to, I don't know, if they could troll a little bit more up there or even just knock on the door. If, if Mike knows exactly which house.
That might be, use what we've already have first and see if that does the trick.
And the last thing is the court deal.
Yeah, the Amish extension funding for the River Street.
Yeah. I would absolutely say no. I would throw that in the trash and run. Because that free, that free money is not free, it's gonna be a liability.
Yeah, for 10 years. And the other thing, I mean, state engineer Josh States writing in one of his emails that it's not gonna stop River Street from flooding.
No.
So...
What does it do? If, if we get the work done, what's accomplished?
It's gonna center the river back up till the next storm. Then that's gonna fill right back in again and then it's, they're gonna, the townspeople are gonna complain probably or somebody's gonna complain, the state, and then they're gonna say, "Oh, you're liable." And beginning with $50,000, it's not even a drop in the bucket what it's gonna cost to haul that material out of the Brooklyn. Because there's nothing we can do. We have no off-road trucks, we have no big excavators.
So what happens if we just leave it as is? If we cut, don't do anything, just leave it as is? What, what's the outcome of that?
Mother Nature tells you that. That's all you can do. Because what you, you could, you know what it's been, we've done work on rivers and stuff and it's changed overnight. Look at that 103 project over there where those people have to cut right through their yard again. They had that all fixed. I, I really don't believe it's, and it's like he said, it's not gonna help or save anybody on River Street or the town garage or anything like that. When it comes up, it's gonna come up.
Once I heard that, I was, in my mind, it was like we should just abandon this thought.
Yeah.
And what do people think?
I thought, I was looking at it kinda saying, "Well, if we did that," that was my question, is how much of that property is it gonna save when it comes to a flood? It isn't gonna save anyone, no getting involved with it.
Yeah, he states right in one of his emails there that it's not gonna help people on River Street.
Right, so... I mean, there's other things that can be done to get that river flowing, you know, where it's supposed to be too, but...
They won't allow that.
Huh? They won't allow that. I know, I know. Get that thing straightened down, get a good flow of water and that'll save, that'll help some of it, but not to put it back, you know, not to...
It needs to be rechanneled where it was originally, that's all.
Right, yeah.
You're not really changing anything, you're just re, hook it back the way it was.
Right. Dig it up, dredge it out, get it deep enough where the water can flow through.
Yeah.
But it's an awful lot of work and a lot of permits.
How does it feel?
I don't know, Sam.
Honorable mentions, I think it's next year. We want to thank Sharon Seaver, Pauline and Mel Seaver, who gave donations to Mayor Lord's Men for Recreation. Elaine Orzoka?
Orzoka?
Orzoka. Carol McLeod, Robert Boucher and Deb Scranton for preparing the month to lose water distribution. Eric Demuth and Jerry Reynolds, the residents of Wallenford, recycling 4,612 pounds of plastic in 2023, keeping it out of the solid waste stream. We got a couple of nice benches out of that so far, so... Our thanks to... Open comments. I'm here for...
I'm here for, there's a building use request from the library, so I'm here to answer questions about that, basically, when it comes up.
Well, it's actually a reminder of agenda. So you're looking for use of the town hall from March 6th through the 10th?
Yeah, what we have in the, in the works, hopefully, is a community theater production of a play called Murder by the Book. And it was a play that's been written by a Canadian author and they've offered it royalty-free to libraries if they want to present this play, which is about a fundraiser for a library where they're gonna stage a mystery theater, but then there's an actual murder. The, the play itself runs like about an hour and 15 minutes or so, it's a comedy. And, um, so they've offered it royalty-free for people that wanted to produce it. And Saskia Holland Broom is interested in directing the play, so we have the director and I will stage manage and we were hoping that we could rehearse, et cetera, at the library, but then bring it to the town hall stage for that week that we're trying to have performances, so...
When is town meeting?
Oh, right in the middle of that week that we're talking about, but we would obviously avoid then. Um, what we were kind of looking at as far as the request would be to load and put things onto the stage Saturday the 2nd. And then we could do dress rehearsals after town meeting, et cetera. So everything that we would be using would be on the stage itself and then be able to set up to have the performances.
What's the first day of performance?
It may be Friday the 8th or we may wait until Saturday. We're thinking about three performances in total. And because of the nature of the play and things going on, we're thinking matinees might be more attractive to the community.
The, the 2nd is a Sunday?
The 2nd is the day we would load in, but the performances would be the following weekend.
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, okay. So you're thinking about coming in the day after town meeting, like for dress? Would be like Wednesday, Thursday?
Wednesday, Thursday, maybe.
And then performances would be Friday?
Or Thursday, Friday, and, I mean, we can firm this up, but the performances would be perhaps Friday, Saturday, or they might be Saturday, Sunday. There'd be three performances in total.
Okay, okay.
And we would charge a donation, but the proceeds to that would be for the library, so...
So you might either decide to do a Friday night and two Saturdays, or two Saturdays and a Sunday?
Correct.
Okay.
That's still kind of, some of that is gonna need to depend. We have auditions slated for next weekend, so it kinda depends on the adults that come out to the show and their availability as well, but that's what we worked up. So, I mean, we're flexible around that too if there's a big conflict.
And Wendy's aware of the dance classes that are on Tuesdays and Wednesdays?
Oh, okay. Because that would be...
That week will only be Wednesday, because the Tuesday one would be disrupted anyways because of town meeting, so, so just Wednesday.
So just Wednesday, that like a maybe, that might also...
That might push it so that the performances are Saturday and Sunday, so that we have two nights of dress rehearsal.
Because then you could do dress on Thursday and Friday and then performance Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah. But it's not a, I mean, it's an undertaking, but I think it's gonna be pretty manageable, the group of adults, so versus having a bunch of kids running around.
Right.
And Wendy knows about the elevators for people, you know, right?
Yeah, we would not, if we have furniture or other things that we're gonna use, we'll get them in here another way besides using the lift elevator.
Sounds good to me.
We do have the, I included the certificate of insurance, but that's just a copy saying we have insurance, but obviously we'll get the right, what's put in the request, we'll get that to you in the event that this works, so.
And we're a benefit to the fundraiser for the library, do we wanna weigh the fee associated with that?
That, that's up to you.
I mean, there's a fundraiser, there's a library, so...
Yeah. Yeah. And the hope would be that it will be a fun community event and people will enjoy it and then there will be a little benefit, but we don't have to pay a huge amount of production grace. And Saskia is volunteering her time because it moves her to direct the play this spring.
She's very experienced in that, she'll, she'll be able to task.
She will. I'm looking forward to working with her. And you're all welcome to audition. All the rehearsals, the auditions, the things like that leading up to it will be, we'll do that at the library. So it's really just that week of production.
Right. Yeah.
So you have like sentences at the point.
And if there's other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks.
Thanks, Wendy.
We'll form it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was easy. Now walk home.
There you go.
Spread the word, get, get people to come out.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Yes, and when you have posters, we can hang them.
And it's going to be, it's for varying ages, so we're hopeful that we're gonna have a few of our trustees and friends who are gonna come out and audition too as part of the effort.
It'll be super fun.
Figures crossed. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thanks.
So we also have another request from Tammy Durden, running Wallenford Elementary. They'd like to use the town hall for an earth dome presentation on Tuesday, April 30th, from 8:15 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon.
That won't interfere with the ongoings here, right? Should be good. Be upstairs?
Yeah, it'll be upstairs.
No, is it them themselves or is a company coming in to do this presentation?
Um, it's both.
Okay.
Yeah, and they'll bring their kids over. They have, they have a huge...
So it's, it's a, a group that puts it on for the school?
Yeah, and they, and this, and the, the cabin gymnasium is too low for it to fit there, so that's why they're...
So they'll be coming over here to do the things with the replica? And they're probably gonna have police go over and do it?
Our ceiling up there is a little higher than the gym?
Really? I wouldn't have thought that.
It is a little roof.
Over there?
Yes.
Yeah, over there. This is definitely gonna be higher, I mean, it's two and a half stories.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And those chandelier and bands are real high, so...
What about our fans and stuff that hang down there?
Well, they're definitely gonna check it out. Where she's supposed to be here, I, maybe she just got, um...
Do we wanna give her a replica? Are, are we at time?
Well, close, I mean, it was 7:00.
Okay. Yeah, it is a few minutes before, do we wanna give her a couple and see if she makes it? And ask her questions?
I guess so.
Yeah. I mean, if they look at it. I mean, she, yeah, they were, she was gonna bring somebody over to look at it too. Get, get your permission, but then have them check it out too and obviously...
I think it's been a while since a school has done something like this earth day celebration. This earth day celebration was part of it for years. It's so wonderful, but it's, it's really amazing.
There were the girls coming over.
I don't know if it's different, I'd like to ask, because is this a different thing?
Nothing really matters, it just was...
Right. Yeah. And have they, do they know what they need for space? Has it been measured?
Yeah, they have the dimensions of the...
Okay. Okay.
Of the planter.
Okay.
Yeah, earth dome presentation assembly, yeah.
Okay.
My other thing is remember this when we need something at the school.
What's this email?
I said, "Just remember this when we need something at the school."
Right. They are giving us school for a town meeting, the info meeting, so... You could, um, prove it conditionally if you want, as long as it fits.
Are they gonna have chaperones for the kids and stuff?
Yes, yeah, the teachers will alter and we'll work.
It's kinda like walking them over for like for each fire token thing. I mean, with the distance. And I think the town hall, isn't that a little still being a condition set for the school?
That's different.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so I guess consensus was improve it conditionally.
Okay. And waive fees too?
Yes.
Okay.
See how they waived the fees for us to use the town hall? Or the school? Yeah, yeah. So we're on the budgets.
Um, should it re, because if the dome is not owned by Wallenford, should that other company be on this contract though? I'm thinking if there's damage or anything, that...
Yeah, do they have insurance security?
They can have, um, the, the, on, if they're going to send out insurance, just to go.
Yeah, just think of that, because if it's not owned by the school, it's not that company's asking for a class.
Yeah.
You don't wanna pay for damage on a big dome.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you think they bring in should be at their own risk?
Right, no, but just like everything else. If, you know, their install may deny, it's a fan or something.
Right.
Yes.
I think they have insurance to cover that.
Okay, so we're on administration budget. So auditor stipends. It really is a question that we increase that from $50 to 100 each. Any good with that? Any particular reason why it's increased or...
It's a very important job. It's not that they do it for the money, but as time to take out taxes, it's hard to get anything, so I just thought, $50 doesn't really matter.
And this is town chief? 150, that's true, that's what you said?
She's got the, yeah, already 300.
Okay, you're okay.
So like 400, 500. So that was $7,600, this past budget. Is everybody speaking on that? The money?
Yeah.
Increase?
Yeah, do we really do this for the money?
It's not really worth the money, that's for sure.
No funding or increasing?
No funding, yes.
Okay.
Reason, except, is it, yeah, assessor is blacked out?
Is it just because it's the header thing of ABCG?
Yeah, it looks like it's the header.
Oh.
Same as Owen.
Assessor clerk. So typically what we've done is decided on the rate of pain, then I can calculate it and put the numbers into the accidenting, the assistant clerk, assessor. So we town court, town minister, or court transfer, see if, unless you don't wanna go across the board.
I would agree with that 1,500. There's only, they haven't even hit 300 for six months, so... And if we're gonna start the appraisal this summer, maybe there'll be more clerical work, but I don't see it exceeding that.
So stay at the 15?
I, I, that's what I bring, I mean, you can do the hourly with the, with the other raises, but as far as the, the total 1,500, I think it's fine.
So the assessor expenses. So we spent 6,900 so far.
And with the praise, will those expenses be more?
The reappraisal expenses come out of that line or no?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll show the reappraisal expenses on that. We'll make it active again, and that comes out as a CDN, yeah. Sandy has something in the memo about this GIS service. That would have to be added to that line if you're gonna approve the 6,000.
Do you see?
Now are we keeping 4002B level?
Where's the, where's the value in that? I don't see any value in that at all, not to the town.
What in the property tax notice?
This GIS access, GIS web-based service.
Isn't the state after that as well, Sandy, as you know? Yeah, the state has.
Is that for tax maps and stuff? No.
So anybody, it sounds like, so anybody can go online and look at maps, but I mean, the state, the state has that.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. A and R has that.
To me, it's an expense that we don't need, in my opinion.
Is this, is this a service that the state's already providing?
It is.
Well, it's something similar to, I don't know if it's the same, but it's not something we have to have.
Because you can go on the state, the, uh, A and R's atlas, but they'll pick out partial IDs, the whole, all the information you need prior to coming in and looking through the maps. So you know what you're looking for.
And if you were interested, you can always, we can always invite them in and do a demonstration sometime later this year. Think about it for next year, if that's something you're interested in.
So based on that. Should we be budgeting here?
So are we leaving five zero to be level funded or?
Yeah. Oh, oh, I was asking, is that gonna be level funded by oh oh two B?
Yeah, seventy-two fifty?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've already spent sixty-nine hundred. What is, what are those expenses?
A lot of that is through memory. For the camera program and this license and that license. Did you get any figures, Sandy? I'm sure it's.
I guess my question is, are we pretty much done with expenses for the year for that, or, I mean, are they gonna keep coming back?
I think so. All the licenses.
So, did it say to leave it at seventy-two fifty? Sandy duly, you think we're safe to leave that? Okay.
And what about five zero zero two C?
Saying two thousand.
So figure in your memo. Put out.
Right. So we're gonna leave it at the two?
That's what he's suggesting. I asked, I asked him what expenses would we be paying for property maps during that timeframe, and he said two.
Okay. Now, let's see.
Assessor contract, it looks like that they're saying four percent increase, which would be nineteen one thirty-six. So it's the five oh two, four oh two G.
Do it, round it up to nineteen two?
Yeah.
Okay, so nineteen two.
So town administrator salary, figure that once we decide the year increase. So any expenses? We budgeted three hundred last year, so far we spent, it's like thirty-nine dollars. Yeah, I'd say we could level fund it.
Level? Fourth dollar service, there are four A, correct?
No, that's, yes. Looking across here. Salary, salary, salaries, overtime transfer. Vote commissioner stipend.
Mr. Shields, tell us to speak up.
What's this now?
Stipend.
You wanna raise?
I'm just spending out of bill or something, that'd be foolish.
So we'll leave it at that too, though. You're certainly underpaid, Phil, but we appreciate everything you do.
Try to help out.
You should, we do, so.
Chief court.
The tree ward. Yeah, two fifty?
Yeah.
So you can tax collect their salary. Five fifty? Fifty-five hundred already in here? Medicare stuff, that'll change based on salaries, right?
Right.
Okay.
And the retirement fund?
What, uh, what do you wanna do about the childcare contribution? I could say he said to.
Definitely cut it off.
Is that a going to there too? Another expense.
We can take twenty-five percent of that from, out of employees' pay, we wish.
You know what they're gonna do in hospital, Caroline?
I was just thinking, no. I haven't heard anything.
But that's, big dollars, dealers pay low. Point four four percent is sixteen hundred. But if we took out a quarter of that from the employees, had them paid a quarter of it, it'd be four hundred dollars, and we would be, the town would be liable for twelve hundred, so.
Okay. Might do that.
It goes into effect July first.
Yeah. One second, I was thinking.
You guys feeling on this?
Man, I want, we have to crash and talk about that again. I don't think it's like, we can refuse not, you know, like.
No.
So it's a matter of.
It's a matter of.
The employees.
Do the employee pay a part of it? I feel as they should.
I mean, they're paying four hundred dollars a year.
Yeah. Yeah. So the consensus is employee will pay twenty-five percent of it. So cost of living raises, we might as well talk about that while we're in this section. Now, I'm getting three point two percent in my social security, so my feeling is.
The three?
Three.
I was actually thinking, because I've heard that's where inflation is right now, is it? Around, around three?
Yeah, that's what I've heard, it's, it's running at three this year.
I think three, a three percent raise, that would be reasonable. You think so?
Most possible, those three percent.
Okay.
So with three percent, just to point out, Jerry's would be fourteen forty-eight. And I'm only pointing out, because concessions would be getting a boost in minimum wage, and they'd be making thirteen sixty-seven. They're catching on, Jerry.
And Jerry's, uh.
That happens everywhere.
But they're not gonna catch up, because Jerry gets a bigger raise every year than than the concessions, so you're actually getting further apart. Salary-wise. Will you direct what should be?
There's something wrong with your chart here, anyway, isn't there? Jerry's getting fourteen oh six now.
Yeah.
You're saying the three percent raise is thirteen ninety-three?
Yes. That doesn't seem.
Something's wrong there.
It's, it would be fourteen forty-eight at that three percent.
So fourteen forty-three, huh?
Yeah.
Didn't I think?
I think it's the chart from last year. Because they're all getting paid with that percentage once.
So the minimum wage last year was thirteen eighteen, and he was making fourteen oh six. So minimum wage went up fifty cents to thirteen sixty-seven. So he was almost a dollar above minimum wage last year. He goes to fourteen forty-eight.
Is that about a dollar?
He's gonna be.
A little less?
A little less than a dollar. Eighty cents above minimum, so he's actually losing, losing ground, not gaining.
Oh, a little, losing a little. What do we think?
I don't have an issue with that really, because I mean, people that are making fifteen dollars an hour when they raise minimum wage, they lose ground. I mean, I can remember when GE turned around and made everybody in the bottom end, you know, eighteen pay rate. People like me that were old twenty-fours, we lost ground.
So I mean, I've seen where new people get paid more, just because of that.
Yes.
Well, public health doesn't make a ten year.
It, it happens in teacher contracts too, where you raise the bond, so the middle and sometimes the top loses or, it just happens.
It's bad and not right, but, I mean, it's a portion of the way you can.
But you also have to, um, you have to respond to the employment trends.
Because then you can argue everybody that has more than, should also be the same. If you do one, then you can make that argue all the way through.
So we can ignore this chart.
So the other question would be, um, if we wanted to do anything, bunch of anything for the reappraisal.
So we're gonna come out thirteen thousand dollars in the hole ultimately?
Yeah, over the two years.
Okay.
Just in order to absorb the pain.
So if we put four thousand dollars a year in over the next three years. That would go most of it.
Yeah. You have to go cut the most.
Do they agree with that?
Okay.
Yeah, so another four thousand a year for the next three years, eh?
And the health officer stipend. About two fifty?
It's at zero.
Why is it at?
Yeah, it's at zero.
Must be in there.
So I'll calculate the three percent probably, I might lose in habit for you.
Okay.
Do you wanna do three percent for the overtime road crucialities still? Line five zero zero seven?
That's what we've usually done.
So.
Oh, I meant. So you the overtime salaries, you increase that by three percent? That means we cut down on the amount of overtime? Because if you take three percent, you give them a three percent raise, and if you add half again, that's much on top of that, it's actually a four and a half percent raise going into overtime, not a three percent. So that number's not gonna go up by three percent. But if you add three, put three percent in there, you're gonna short yourself on the amount of overtime that you're gonna be paying. Am I right?
So what should we do instead?
It sounds logical, what you're saying, yes.
So what's the suggestion for?
It should be four and a half percent.
Should be four and a half percent on the time and half, on the overtime.
Right, right.
Is that what you wanna do, four and a half? We, they were at, um.
I mean, it's not an hourly rate, that's a.
It's also, it's also just such a counter, like we're at thirty-one point nine percent right now. Of course, it's just January.
And it's a, we don't spend.
We really plan one or something, or two.
But they did also put in a lot this summer, which we will get reimbursed, but they did put in a lot of overtime this summer because of FEMA.
Right.
At least for that first week. Yeah, got a lot of winter left. Is that what you're gonna do, four and a half percent for OT?
Yeah, to the matter, you're gonna cut down the hours that you work.
That's not really an option, is it?
Not really.
Not what they do.
So we're on to draft insurance budget.
So you wanna just per test? Yes. If you can kind of figure the first six months of the fiscal year, but then you're guessing January to June of one five.
So one fourteen, six fifteen is the number?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Best guess, isn't it?
I mean, health insurance went up ten percent this year, so I mean, that, that would be like a ten percent increase on one of four, so. I mean, health insurance went up ten percent this year, so I mean, that, that would be like a ten percent increase on one of four, so...
Okay. So one sixteen?
One fourteen's...
Six fifteen is the number?
Six fifteen. One fourteen, six fifteen, okay.
Draft revenue budget. Tell me something good, Julie.
Are you waiting on me for something? So we're at twenty-nine percent, we'll go right away on... It was fine.
Twenty-nine percent?
Yeah, so... We should be close to fifty percent.
Yeah. That's not good.
Looking a little fair down, I mean, yeah, for last year's, it was sixty-eight. Maybe we lost a little in those times.
Was it?
It was sixty-eight, we got the, through June, sixty-eight, ten.
Go to seventy-five hundred? Okay, this guy writes tickets, but... So office rent, that's what the fire district pays.
And that's four thousand?
Mm-hmm, we just paid that.
Okay. Is there any permits?
It looks like you could push, they could push that up to five thousand, or they got fifty-three hundred last year, so...
Is there any permits?
Yeah.
How we doing on that this year?
Four, five, one, three...
It's like...
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred. I have, I don't know, four thousand might be optimistic.
Yeah, I think so.
So what will fund?
Four thousand is optimistic level of funding, isn't it?
Well, I mean, uh...
I mean, we've done eighteen hundred, and we're halfway through the year.
Yeah.
Do we want to save any money?
Well, yeah, he's correct, we're halfway through the year, so maybe we'll go with, yeah, let's stay with four thousand. Take a chance. Transport station fees. We've got sixteen thousand so far, so... We did forty-one the year before.
Yes.
We do that for it?
Yeah, so...
Just hope?
And two for the recycle.
That's the...
Scrap metal, we're about two thousand already this year.
So that's very good.
Yeah. So do we want to put that...
Leave it or make it a three?
Because we're at, we're at two.
Let's bump it up to three.
Yeah.
What am I gonna do?
Three thousand.
Two thousand?
Three.
Three, okay. Sorry, can't hear around.
Empty of funds income.
We'll get those numbers soon. So if you just go on that, one way front up.
We're at zero for that so far.
Yeah, they'll all come in the spring.
Should we get that divided with the year before, or bump it to three hundred?
Yeah.
It's like we're down to the summer rent program.
That's seventy, seventy-three, fifty-nine.
Leave it at seven?
Just thinking, well, like seventy-five. Raise the rate a little bit. Is anybody else's feeling?
Nope. Sorry?
Seventy-five?
Yeah.
Income. We did sixty-three.
Sixty-two, sixty-three.
Sixty-five?
Yeah.
It was seven the year before, total.
Yeah. I'll take sixty-five.
Sixty-five, everybody thinks it.
And now we'll have a hot, not ready summer.
Concession income. We did...
Three thousand, sixty-five.
Three thousand?
Three thousand?
Three thousand, we're at thirty-one. Three thousand, three thousand. Three thousand.
There you go. Okay.
It looks like we're through that for now. So we're on to UA's contract extension with the ERC. Copy the agreement in our packets there, if you want to authorize me to sign it?
I do, so.
Yeah.
Need a formal motion on that, or a consensus of the board?
We could do that, please.
So batteries for the flashing radar signs.
Sid, I don't know if you saw my email?
Yep.
But my reason for saying we ought to get a spare battery is one battery, because when you program the sign, they want you to use a fully charged battery. So we don't need spare batteries for the whole thing, we just need one battery to change when we do the sign. When we, when you reprogram the sign, pull the battery out, put a new battery in, program your sign, and then you can leave it. Because they're never fully charged unless you catch it in the end of the day, you know, when the sun's been out all day, so...
My understanding from reading this was that you have to buy batteries for the new signs, right? They don't come with a batteries?
They do come with a battery, these are just for extras.
These were extras.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So are you proposing that we buy one two-pack battery kit?
So do you do the same thing with just like a car bag?
I don't know, I just go by what they recommended in the brochure, they wanted it fully, because you gotta, you have to physically pull the old battery, put it in, plug it up, fully charge battery, so, um, that's why I was just thinking if we had one...
Have one.
You know, and then if one dies, we always have, you know, we can just switch it out.
Is there, is there a number that we could pull off the battery in that existing one? Because I bet we could buy a battery without that interstate battery.
Probably could.
So do we want to...
Their hundred twenty-five dollar price on the use of batteries is actually pretty much average for one of those batteries.
Right.
There are generic brands that you can buy that are much cheaper and...
Well, actually, there's the, there's a number on that battery right there. Right on their register.
Yeah, I think that's their number, though.
Yeah, but you might be able to cross-reference it with, because it's just a twelve volt, twenty-two ampere battery.
Yeah.
With fuse protection, so...
With a two hundred, two-dollar charge. So the, I pulled up the SPAM on what we ordered, and it includes the USO battery pack, twelve volt with integrated fuse protection. That comes with a...
Yeah, so maybe, I mean, maybe we can reach out to Interstate and see if they have anything equivalent to that.
So do we want to sample this until we look into that?
Yeah, well, either way, we're gonna drop it down to one battery, so, I mean, I don't think we need all those spare batteries. They're gonna die before we use them.
Okay.
But one fully charged battery, like I said, is mainly to program them, so...
But do you want to look into the other option first before we commit?
Can you call Interstate, say the air?
Yeah.
Okay. Just give them that, tell them that's what you need for a battery, and all it is, is they're just two, they look just like a, uh, an exit sign battery, they just have two positive and negative current.
Is it like that?
That's pretty much.
Forty-six dollars.
Yeah.
Oh. Wow. Okay.
Annual town report dedication.
Is he getting...
I'm good with it. Everybody good with it?
It's nice.
Nice job, Sid.
Yes.
Select board comments or concerns. Whoops, I skipped through everything. Revenue...
Oh, yeah.
So we discussed using the revenue augmentation for a grader payment. The voters at the last election approved spending two-thirds of the trust for a town capital project. And the current balance is two thou, two hundred and forty-six thousand eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. Would everybody like to proceed on this? Phil has talked about the need for a dump truck. We have budgeted a payment already in the budget for the grader. And we did lose a payment from one of the other pieces of equipment.
The excavator, isn't it, or the loader?
What's that?
The excavator and loader payment stuff. Camera.
And loader?
Loader, so.
I know it wasn't an exact wash, but...
Now we probably don't have any more dump trucks.
Four hundred dollars, we didn't make that all right?
Dump truck?
Yeah.
Oh, two fifty. Yeah, I would say. Jesus, pickup's a hundred thousand, though. Two fifty, probably shy.
Is it coming, is it going? So I'm gonna...
It's crazy.
Want to do?
So the loader... The loader payment looks like it was twenty-eight, two twenty-five. And the grader, sixty-seven, so we're talking like a forty thousand dollar increase if we don't use any of this money.
So if we don't use the money, is there anything we need to do about that, or...
We'll consider an account if we decide what we're gonna use it for.
I think we should pull forty thousand a year out of it to make up the difference in the payment for the grader. In other words, we weren't paying, you know, just make that, make up that forty thousand over the next five years out of that account. If we can do that.
The one thing with that is that we're at the turnaround and spend the balance. You know, we pull the forty thousand out this year, but then we take the balance and buy a dump truck or something.
What do you think?
The excavator's up, I mean, the next year?
Yes, this is the final payment on excavator.
What's that, about twenty?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
And that's maintenance.
Okay. So how do we bump it up?
Well, I guess as a dump truck, it'd be a minimum of a year and a half out. That is if we, we know we start it now.
Okay.
I mean, it took the grader...
I mean, all the...
Over a year and a half to...
The trucks paid for?
All our trucks.
All the trucks are paid for.
I think it was one excavator payment and a grader.
So what if we took, took a hundred sixty of this, put it right toward the grader this year? That would drop the payment way down over the next...
Five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you'd have a...
Yeah.
And do the same, and then after, after...
You have like a hundred thousand you could use for a down payment on the dump, dump truck.
Well, I could say, because if we know that the, yeah, if we know that the truck is paid off in this next year's budget, when it comes in the first year next year, well, we could start, whether they have to have down by a truck, you gotta pay for the truck upfront, do you think?
I don't think so, I don't think the municipals ever, we've ever paid for anything upfront.
Okay.
So if you sign until it's built?
So if we were to, if we think it's gonna be a year and a half to get a truck, or like, say, next winter anyways...
A year would be, I wouldn't even think it would be a year, I think it'd be a year and a half.
So if we were to start getting estimates now on a truck, make the, make, use a hundred thousand or whatever, or a hundred sixty on the grader, when it comes time for next year's budget, then start planning the truck and just plan on keeping the, the payment that we had for the excavator going. In order, but order the truck now if we don't want to pay for it for a year.
There's still some on a truck refund too, I think, or...
Yeah, twenty-five seven thousand.
Yeah, fifty-seven.
Yeah, so...
It's not like we're dead in the water, the money flies on that side.
So that would give you like a hundred fifty-something thousand to put toward the truck?
That's another twenty in June.
Yeah.
Okay. So seventy-seven? Seventy-seven thousand, by the end of June, we'll be in the highway front.
So what do people think of that, a hundred sixty?
Put a hundred sixty on the grader? So put us a hundred and sixty on the grader. That'll weave a hundred in there-ish.
Yeah, around a hundred.
And get ready to start the truck, truck ordering process now, if it's gonna take a year plus.
It'll take three months probably, just to get estimates, stuff lined up.
The other...
To look at.
The other thing I was wondering about is, we've got that truck sitting down there that's useless. Would it be in our best interest to have a spare running? I don't think it's that one, but I'm saying...
We talked about trading that one.
Right.
Instead of the two Cadillars, one of the two.
Or keeping the spare. Okay. But I'm just thinking, you know, they're getting tired. Things are gonna break.
They are. But yeah, if you, if you keep any spare, and it isn't Ben, it's not ours, so we know how it's maintained. You're gonna, you never know what you're gonna run into. You're buying from big and hope, is what it amounts to.
So now that's a good idea, you keep, yeah, trade that one in.
At least ours, you know what's going on with them. You know what the maintenance, that, and they're not abused.
Won't get much for a trade in, but...
Be lucky if you get the record pulling.
I could've said delivery fees.
So this is what we...
Somebody wanna make a move?
So this is what we're gonna have when we add in this amount from the fourth quarter, correct? So we took a one sixty back. That would leave us with...
Yeah, so...
Yeah?
That's good.
Okay.
So would someone like to make a formal motion that we's got a hundred and sixty of the revenue?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion, we take a hundred and sixty thousand of the the revenue augmentation trust and put it towards the payment on the grader.
Oh, great question.
And keep the remainder in there for future payment on trucker, or what, I don't think we wanna add that, and we just keep the remainder.
We should reinvest, right? One third is reinvested. That was how the article was written.
So you don't want your full two thirds, your only tenth along sixty?
Right now.
Is there any problem with that? I think we're just gonna leave that. Did you talk with any of the trustees, Sandy? They're just gonna leave the, the balance in this, this fund?
Yes, I think so.
So you want... Are we refinancing the grader then, to lower the payment? Is that done? What do you...
Didn't it say there was no penalty for other payments?
There's no prepayment penalty, but don't you wanna lower payment?
Yes.
So are we gonna be paying down the principal, correct? That's what I gotta find out. There's a percentage, so that... So you borrowed two hundred and sixty-six, five, I believe. Are we just refinancing the balance?
So basically, do you wanna lower the payments per month, or do you wanna pay early so we have less payment? So the payment's more...
Right, less, exactly.
And you wanna pay on the principal a hundred and sixty thousand, so then...
And keep our monthly payments the same?
Well, it's just, it's an annual payment.
An annual type, right.
I'm just...
No, we would refinance to lower that.
Okay, that's what we... Is there fees for refinancing, though?
Will there be a fee for refinancing?
No.
Oh, well, that's good.
When did we have that up to? Didn't we push that out a little ways to keep them?
Five years?
Oh, I thought it went further, no.
Okay, we'll be on five years, I asked to go to the voters.
So we'd still, so we'd push it out for refinancing another five years? At a small payment?
Yes. Or maybe four years.
Four years, right. Right, I know, we won't have any one payment on that. We made payment, yeah, no.
So we can change that line item?
Right, so we'll change line five, three, four, six.
Okay. So do we have a second here? If we don't have a second, I'll second.
You're safe.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
What's that?
Well, we're on to select board comments and concerns.
I have one. The fire district, I think, is in charge of plumbing and standing, is that correct?
Sidewalks, yes.
So School Street, at least from what I've seen, we've had some icy days, icy mornings, and there has been no salt or can put down on the sidewalk. And we've got school kids who are using the sidewalk to get to school. What can we do to make sure that we're not letting residents deal with icy conditions, like?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything else? And we have no other business, so...
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.